Good afternoon, everyone. Happy Monday. We will go ahead and get started. It's about two o'clock on the dot. And I know we have folks who have joined us in the room as well as on our broadcast. And today's presentation and discussion will be rebroadcast later on in the week. So we will go ahead and get started with our presentation and discussion. And I'll invite Steve Scott to the podium to open us with a word of prayer.
Let us pray. Eternal God, for the gift of today, we give you thanks. For the gift of friendships and moments we have felt connected, we give you thanks. We also lift up those in our community who are ill and in need today of loving, healing, and supportive spirit. And we also come together today, dear Lord, in this meeting time to learn, to find clarity, and for sharing, to continue to give us guidance and to make Covenant Woods a community. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Steve. At this time, I would like to invite your chair, Bob Tate, to the podium to share a few words with us. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you, sir. Before I get started on my very brief report on council activities, I'd like to thank whoever it was that spread the word that I was at death's door or something, and you were more concerned about me than you needed to be. I think that all started the day after the last council meeting on Thursday. On Friday, I tested negative, only to find out on Sunday, two days later, that I was not feeling too well. So when the nurses from dispatch came over, apparently somebody had told them a phrase that I used, an old family phrase that I felt like I was death warmed over. They were surprised to find me on my feet, so maybe that rumor spread from there. But whatever reason, thank you for the concern. It was not all that bad. We had intended today to take advantage of the opportunity of this group being together to pass or to hold a council meeting in order to enact a revision to our bylaws. During the meantime, however, we found that there are a couple of things that's been brought to our attention that we need to give a little bit more thought to before we do that. So there will be no council meeting today. There will be no revision of the bylaws. We plan to do that maybe in May at the next opportunity for a group to get together. So the only thing I have to report to you is that the survey that we took back in March indicates that some of the council members seem to feel a little hesitant or questioned, questioning about what the purpose and some of the procedures that we use. So we're going to focus in the first couple of meetings on trying to solve that issue and to clarify whatever the problem is. So anyway, thank you for inviting me today, and I hope we have a wonderful meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I would also like at this time to share with you that we have added Richard Gibbons to our plaque that's in center point for his service as resident council chair. And Dick, it's been a pleasure. It was a true pleasure coming into Covenant Woods for you being part of the recruiting process and representing residents throughout my process to be chosen as your next CEO. But I really enjoyed working with you and how you've established the council, the goals. I love the executive committee of the council, working with them to craft the agendas and to know that we're working in tandem together, that we have shared values, that we have shared concerns, and that we have a shared focus on transparent communication and good governance. And I really appreciate that, and I think you set the tone really well. And I know Bob's doing a great job so far, and he's going to carry the banner forward, and we really appreciate that. So at this time, we'll go into our updates. We have a series of presentations. But I want to start with a conversation first. And that is a little bit about the 2022 initiatives that I had laid out back in January with you all. And there were eight at that time. We're working earnestly on most of them. But the first and foremost is our financial performance as a community. And that has come through in several conversations, as well as several email exchanges that we've had about the impact of how we're doing with the different divisions that we have here at Covenant Woods. And assessing, you know, the impact that it's had on you, not only throughout COVID, but now coming out of the COVID, out of COVID, how, what the impact is to the organization and what our new learned and shared behaviors and model of operation look like. And so we went into our budgeting process in 2023 with a certain intent, and we want to carry that out to be good stewards. But we're also realizing that as we look at each of the different parts of Covenant Woods, whether that is Woodhouse catering, or whether that is fireside to-go, or advanced care, home care and hospice, how does all that fit and how does it work? And I think for me, fundamentally, coming in as a new guy, I wanted to understand why. Why are we doing these? And how do they fit within our mission? And then how does that all become operationalized? And at what point will our plan show that it will be successful? Or maybe we need to turn in some different directions to either be more successful or to be okay with saying no, we need to pause or stop. And that's kind of the framework I've been approaching our business writ large, to take a look at how we're doing. We'll hear from Eric in a little bit about the financials and where we are currently. And then I think what is sort of laid into that conversation around how we're doing is the sense of coming back together again after COVID and realizing that our model, in some ways, including dining and so forth, have changed. Expectations have changed. We have new residents with maybe different expectations. You will hear from Mike, and we can share a little bit more about how the fireside is operating or not. I'm hearing some frustrations that have been brought forth, and we hear you. We take that seriously, and we're looking at all the ways in which we can maybe change or pivot or modify how we're offering our service and to whom. So that way, we can have a better experience for everyone. But know that we're starting with you all. You live here. You give us the sources, the resources to do what we do, and you entrust that with us. And so we want to be good stewards of what you have given to us. But also, we want to understand what are your expectations around all areas of operations? And dining has come up recently as a pretty hot topic for some of our conversations that we've had, and whether that was bottleneck of service and why is that happening in front of the house, back of the house? Why are we continuing to offer, you know, fireside to-go when in fact we may have some residents here who can't even get into the dining room and have service? That's really important to us. So friends, what I'm saying is that we're, we are willing, as the team, and in partnership with you all, to really look deeply at what we're doing and how we're offering programs and services. And so what you'll hear over the course of this presentation, but also over the course of the next month or so, are some meaningful ways in which we feel we should respond to some of the growing concerns that you have. But going back to the top line, which is financial performance, we are still measuring. We're doing better, but we're not quite there yet. And the ways that we're going to do better is that we obviously need to focus on occupancy. That continues to be a bit of a challenge, but I will say that we're doing much better in assisted living and memory support in terms of occupancy with a shift in focus, not only from a market perspective, but internally just our focus on the services and programs. We're seeing that turn in the right direction. That's good news. We are focused on the Primrose Apartments, which are currently, we have 10 available. That's a lot of one-bedroom units that we have to focus on. And so Aaron Melton in marketing, Tim and his team, and Eric and myself, we're working on a plan to shift that a little bit to the, to the positive so that we have, we can make them attractive, but also we can help with the occupancy component altogether. The more we do better, we all do better. And so we know some of our pain points, and I won't steal some of Mike's thunder about what he wants to talk about today. But I would invite Mike to the conversation about Woodhouse because that has come up in fireside. And I'll let you share a little bit, and then I can share also.
Good afternoon, everybody. So I have some notes. So I wanted to just discuss some changes that were going to be happening. I understand that there's some issues with the perception of the service that's going on in fireside compared to the service that we provide to the public. So with those concerns, as Tom said, we want to make sure that we're focusing on you all. So we don't have a specific timeline, but very soon, we're going to pause fireside service to the public. Okay, so that will not be offered for a certain amount of time until we staff up appropriately, add some additional staff to help support what is going on in the dining room now because we'd like to be able to limit the wait times that are currently happening. Okay, does that make sense? Okay. Secondly, something that I just want to make sure everybody understands is the majority of carryout orders comes from the residents who live at Covenant Woods. Okay? So all those meals that everybody sees at the bar that get carried out or delivered are all internal resident orders. Okay, and that's why I said I think there's a perception piece here that is difficult to, to understand. So each day, on an average, we do 30 to 40 carryouts internally a day. Part of that, when people talk about the, the cars that pull up around, we can do up to 15 curbside orders a day from residents. Okay, so I just want to make sure that there's a very clear understanding of what goes on internally compared to the percentage that goes on externally. But we've also made a conscious decision to add additional staff on the floor, of fireside and vistas, to help mitigate those wait times. Okay? So with a combination of both, pausing the outside service, adding additional staff to the floor, we're hoping that there's a positive impact. Now, please understand, that's going to take some time because you have to understand that doesn't change the amount of orders that we still do. We're still going to do 100 to 130 people at dinnertime between five and seven o'clock. So be patient with us as we try to figure that out with the additional help. But I just want to be perfectly clear that part of this is perception. Okay? So we just want to work through that with all of you. Some good news, hopefully this is all good news, but more good news is we're going to be working towards reopening Traditions on Saturday night. Okay? That's going to take some time. I've had some discussions with my staff, and we feel we need to hire about six more servers to be able to get that extra day and then also put the additional two people on the floor at fireside. Right now, we're still in that same position where we're setting up interviews. People are not showing. We're having a much easier time hiring cooks, the more professional positions, than the part-time server and utility positions. So even though we're saying this now, I can't put a date to when we do that. You know, please understand that, but that is the plan. So we basically have to hire six servers. And I think we're still looking for three more cooks. So I can't put a date to it, but all that is currently in the works. Does anybody have any questions about any of that? I think I, I got all of it. Yes, sir.
If the question that comes in my mind is that people are carrying out food, why can't they get their food before five o'clock? We can take them back to their apartment or to the house, put them in the refrigerator. Do you allow for them to be alongside?
Yes, Mr. Vogel. Yeah. If everybody didn't hear that Mr. Vogel was asking why we can't put specific time parameters around when there's pickup, and I guess that would be both for fireside and Traditions. And I know you and I have chatted about that before. And of course, you know, again, in theory, that's a really good idea. But I think in practice, it eliminates a service, right? So, and we kind of talked about if you're not able to get back to the property before to put your order in and pick up, then, and if you want carryout, you're kind of cut off at that five o'clock time. So things to think about. And I do appreciate that comment because in theory, I think it makes very good sense. But in practice, I think it would be difficult to mitigate all the concerns that may come up from our residents with it. Other questions? All right. Well, I appreciate it. Please be patient with us. We're working through some, some stuff that, that's in, in, in the best interests of the community. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, but ideas like that are really worthy of discussion and consideration. And, you know, maybe it is that at some point, and maybe it's having two different periods outside of the real busy time in fireside to maybe offer or encourage people to get their to-go. But I think that's what I was referring to in this example of what has changed coming out of the pandemic. I know my own behavior has changed around DoorDash and having things delivered to my home versus having to go out to the store and make it. Maybe I got lazy. I don't know. But I feel like when I'm not feeling up to it, I do want things brought to us. And so from a consumer perspective, I think that has changed. And I think, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, we used to have maybe 12 tops, and now we have 30 to 40. Two to four, thank you. Two to four to-go at fireside, and now it's up to 30 and 40. So it's changed, and that's okay, some of which is driven by COVID, others just newfound behaviors or favorite TV show. But that has changed, I think, the behaviors across the country. So in acknowledgement of that, and perhaps until we have these conversations that came up during my coffee chat and a neighborhood meeting and some emails, I didn't realize how much that had changed for us at Covenant Woods. So in partnership with you all, we can figure this out, I think, and just keep communicating, working through the dining committee, working through the council, and then we can work together. But certainly feel free to see Mike or I about any concerns you, you may have. Sure. So Mike is asking me to share that moving forward at some point in May or June, he's, he and the dining committee will have some small forum discussions around Woodhouse and dining in general to bring you into that conversation, to lean into some data, some information, and then to ask more specific questions about that, much like we've been doing with the neighborhood meetings that I hold. So I think that's a good right step, just to draw in that, that information and share that out in small groups. And we can share that broadly, as well as you hear some different themes that everyone should know. Let me move forward. Strategic planning, as you know, we do have a strategic planning committee. In terms of resident involvement, we need a better process to identify folks. It worked out really well for the strategic planning process. But when we have five people step forward, and so all five are on the committee with the board members and our directors. But, and as we look forward to having a resident board member, an official board member, what does that process want or need to be through the council? And how do we engage that in a clear process so that folks who maybe want to either step up by themselves or be nominated to serve, how does that work and represent everyone as a whole? It's working really well at the, at the strategic planning level. We're very focused at the 10,000-foot view of, of direction. We're not trying to decide if we're going to have pickleball courts or anything like that. I mean, that's master planning down the road. This is simply to say, what direction do we want to go in and how will we get there? And then how do we know we're arriving in the right direction, like a GPS, right? So finance being, you know, top line, certainly resident focus with programs and services. We're working on the areas, strategic focus areas right now. That's our mission on Wednesday for the committee to develop those. And then your resident council, the resident who are part of this committee will come forth with different small group process to invite you into, again, to that conversation about strategy and maybe to affirm the direction or offer some more insights. So you will all have that opportunity in the month of May to participate in strategic planning with us. So we look forward to that, and we really appreciate it. I'll share just briefly about Manor East Programming and Services. We will have more of a focus on the memory support and also just generalized small neighborhood approach to service and care and delivery program in Manor East. As I've mentioned before, we're undergoing a rebranding, which is to say that we want to remarket that a little bit and really kind of capture the essence of what happens in those neighborhoods and all the great things that, that we're working on and how we approach care to those who live there. So that will be actually launching in the fall. But you will hear more about that in the summer from Aaron Melton and Kerry and myself. But we are starting with a lot of staff training, starting in May. It's pretty intensive. Our own Tara Beatty will be doing some of that training. She just went to get different certification and dementia training, and that's really great. And then we have a consultant who's coming in to do some work with us as well. So we will share some of that information with you, invite you to some discussion sessions around that, just to let you look into, see how we're approaching this. But it's very much person-centered, and it's really strength-based. And so I think it'll be a wonderful philosophy. It's going to be a culture shift, I think, to some degree. And yet we've heard from the staff that they are, they are yearning for the sort of training and expertise. They want to do the best, and they just need some direction to do that and some best practices to understand how to, how to deliver those services. So I'm really excited for the opportunity. I'll be involved as a coach as well, and we'll see this all the way through. So some more great things coming about that. We mentioned diversity, equity, belonging, and inclusion, maybe setting up a committee for that. That has happened, not at this point at the board level, but it is a staff committee. And we are inviting two residents who came forth to be members as well. So resident and staff, we're focused a lot on inclusion and belonging and celebrating what makes us the same in our values, but also celebrating what makes us different as well. And that's both for staff and residents. So you'll hear from this committee moving forward. We've already had one really great meeting, and we're looking forward to some education in two weeks from some outside folks who want to talk to us about what this really means and what it means for us here and how powerful it can be. And the last thing I'll talk about is going paperless. We mentioned Earth Day, and that happened Friday. I will say we did not reach 90% going paperless, and you might be thankful for that because we still do like our paper to some degree. But we have 100% identified the documents that want to be transitioned to paperless. But also know that we will always have some degree of paper. I mean, some folks like to have the connections and different newsletters and some memos by paper. That will be through exception mostly. The rest will be on either Katie or in email. So we're moving a little slower on that just to be more intentional. So it's not too much of a, a shift. But we are making progress in that direction. At this time, I'll open it up to some questions for me before we pass it off to Eric to give his presentation. I see a hand in the back, and I will repeat the question. So the question up here, we'll get, is that we had eight initiatives. The others, one was dead in the water, and that was really about creating some sort of scholarship or subsidized housing for missionaries and so forth. There were some more discussions, either wanted to happen or not. So we scrapped that one as a 2022 initiative. Joint ventures with local officials to talk about maybe ways that Covenant Woods could be part of the overall vision for Hanover County, filling in some of the gaps of either like recreation program or what other sort of services they might need or anticipate needing in their plan that perhaps Covenant Woods could be part of. Those are underway in terms of conversations, but we, we're not moving in any certain direction. It's more introductory. And the other one was really about introducing technologies. And we talked about adding a point-of-sale system in the dining room to facilitate ordering, to make that a little easier. That still will happen, but it hasn't happened yet. So I think those were the eight. You're welcome. And then, yes, sir. So the comments about Katie and, and the fact that it's been hung up for a few days and not able to access information, I'll invite Tom to answer that question. I think there was an upgrade that happened or will be happening, but I don't want to confuse that, that matter. So thank you for that.
It is not, to my knowledge, a widespread condition. Have you rebooted? Okay. All right. If you could, call the concierge and just put in a work sub ticket, and we'll get in touch with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Then I will pass it on to Eric for his CFO update.
Good afternoon, everybody. So go through some highlights related to our fiscal year in 2022 that just ended. And then we'll talk a little bit about 2023 that just started. So 2022, we did finish the year meeting all of our required covenants, which is always a good thing. But this, this fiscal year was a historically bad year in many ways. It was a lot of a perfect storm. We had continued COVID-related issues, as we're evidenced by here today, expenses, but none of the federal assistance that went with that last year. So, but we had over $700,000 in COVID expenses. So with advanced care, our home health, we went through a complete reorganization and rebranding of that, connecting that to Covenant Woods. This was something that we knew we were going to have to go through and do. We had changeover in leadership early in 2021. And basically, anything that could have, that you could change with a business, we did change. And that took the process of the year. We, we, the computer systems, the EMR was, was, was replaced. Leadership was replaced. We moved physical locations over to the Boulders to provide a better area, a better office environment for everybody that was a lot more efficiently set up. And we just, and the rebranding efforts as well to connect that with Covenant Woods. So all of that was throughout the year FY22. Additionally, we had two startups. We had Hospice. Kay is here today. Kay Sahaki is our Hospice Executive Director, and she'll come up, introduce herself, talk a little bit about Hospice right after me. But we had that happen, and we actually just got licensed for that back in December. So it's been a long process trying to go through that. Woodhouse, who we've been talking about earlier today, that was also a startup last fiscal year. We also had workforce shortages that is, continues to be a challenge to some degree, although I believe that it is, at least in some areas, it's starting to free up a little bit more. And of course, the wage pressures that have, that was really a big factor in our budget for this fiscal year that just started. In addition to that, we also had significant inflation and supply chain issues trying to get things done. So it was hitting in a lot of different directions for, for last year. And so it made, it made FY22 a particularly bad year. And I've been here close to 18 years, and I can tell you it was probably one of the most challenging years that we've been through since I've been here. We, on the, on the plus side, we went through a refinancing of our 2012 serious bonds that were outstanding. So we did that. We had, we were lucky enough to secure that with private placement. I think I'd mentioned that before in previous town hall when we had just gone through that. We closed on that April 6th, so this month, so that is now officially done. We have, with that comes better interest rates for us, so better cost of borrowing, as well as some better terms that we were able to negotiate. So those are definitely some positive things that came out of last year. So just giving you highlights, and I go, I go through highlights because I put a whole lot of numbers up here. It's hard for you to see them. It's a lot for me to have to go through. go through. And honestly, a lot of this information is posted out there on Katie for anyone to look at. So but just to give you a high level view for FY22, Covenant Woods had about $34.4 million in revenues for the year, 34.8 in expenses, with a deficit of $360,000 for the year. Advanced Care Home Health, with all of that reorganization, it was we suffered on that one. Revenues were far less than what we had envisioned on that, 4.3 million, 6.4 million in expenses, leading to a $2 million deficit there. Hospice, zero revenues because we are trying to get Medicare certified. And until we get Medicare certified, there will there will be no revenue. So that's we're in a process of doing that right now. The hope is that we will we will have that soon, but we do not have that as of yet. $841,000 deficit there. And Woodhouse, Woodhouse was $207,000 in revenues, $256,000 in expenses, leading to a deficit of 49, just under $49,000 for that venture. Ending the year, we had 351 days cash on hand. That's our liquidity covenant compared to a minimum requirement of 150. We did we did meet that. Debt service coverage, which measures more the ability to cover your debt and through your operating income. We had a 1.18. We need at least a 1.0 times to to meet that. We did with a cushion of 0.18 on that. Net operating margin, we had a net loss of $6.1 million with a target we with a budgeted target of 1. call it 1.3 million dollar loss is what we were anticipating. And that's a variance of 2.3 million dollars, actually, that did not turn I did not calculate that right. So apologize for that. Just not seeing that. So we did not meet that. Financial highlights. So F talk about this year just started. We are definitely looking for a much better year this year than than last year. And there's a lot of reason to be optimistic, I believe, for this year. We are assuming higher levels of census, which is the primary driver for our revenues across the board and and what we need to have in order to be successful financially. And that's in independent living, certainly in assisted living, as well as advanced care on the home health and on the hospice side and getting and getting census up. Minimum wage, the budget, the budget assumes minimum wage of $15 an hour for Covenant Woods employees. That, along with the related wage compression associated, that's all dialed into the FY23 budget. This budget is posted out there on Katie. So I invite all of you who have not maybe taken a look at it to go out there, take a look at it. Again, there's a lot of detail out there. By all means, pour through it. Any questions you have, you're I'm welcome to answer any questions one-on-one with anybody who has any. Projected net operating margin improves from that negative $6.1 million to a negative 2.8. While negative 2.8 does sound bad, it is that is a market improvement over the 6.1 negative. And recognizing that we are not going to solve the world's problems overnight, it will take some time. It was it was anticipated that that was going to be the case as we were going through the refinancing, which is why we were able to negotiate as part of our refinancing that we could exclude our principal payments for the year and also exclude that from the calculation in our debt service coverage ratio. That was the whole reason for it. They understood when we talked to those investors that we were going to need a little bit of time to come out of this. And so they afforded us that opportunity, which was which was a good deal for us. And I think it also goes to show the relationship that we have with the investors out there. The $54 million in debt that we that we got renegotiated and replaced was with our five largest bondholders out there. And we're not talking, you know, mom and pop shops here. This is Vanguard, T. Rowe Price. These are names you know. Those are the those are the ones who had private placement for this debt. So they've been great to work with all along and continue to be. And so we look forward to working with them going forward. So factors for this turnaround in FY22, the reorganization I mentioned with Advanced Care, reorganization, rebranding, that is now complete. We are we are certainly on the upswing on that. Hiring was a major factor for for Advanced Care. Referral base was there. They were getting the referrals. They didn't have the nursing staff on hand to be able to accept those referrals. So that that was a draw a drag on the revenue. They have been able to they've been very successful in hiring a lot of nurses and therapists now over the last month or two. And I think something, too, that should point out kind of a change. A year ago, with the change of leadership, things like that, there was some low morale over at Advanced Care on the home health side. We certainly were not going to get a lot of employees that were openly wanting to get their friends over to work for them. That has changed. We now are some of some of the people that we're hiring, that's because of employee referrals. And that's that should be saying something about the morale over there and how that has improved. So with the hiring, almost fully staffed at this point for this year's budget, we should be looking a lot better for being able to take the take those referrals and start taking off in a better direction on revenues. We also recently launched the in-home outpatient therapy. Many of you may realize we have Advanced Care that does our therapy here on site, downstairs and up on the nursing unit. We decided we wanted to try to capitalize and grow on that, better utilization of some of our therapists, like speech therapy, and bring that into the home. We didn't need any additional licenses to do that. We did have some additional setup that we had to go through, and we did that. So that is something that we've just now started, which is promising going forward. Very optimistic that COVID-related issues and the restrictions associated are on the way out. That's going to help census overall, especially when you're talking about over in assisted living. So increased marketing efforts for Manor East to increase census specifically in assisted living. So there's a focus there. I know Tom has talked about that with some of the marketing efforts that we have over there. So that is that those are all of the highlights that I have. Yes. For the management fees. So within these numbers, they we do include the management. There's a management fee associated Covenant Woods charging the entities. And this is for use of services that they would otherwise need to use anyway, such as HR payroll, IT, you know, accounting, things of that nature. So we charge the divisions a management fee. For Advanced Care Home Health, it was about $140,000. For Advanced Care Hospice, it was probably about $91,000. And for Woodhouse Catering, it was $37,000. So those are really it's kind of on paper to some degree because we're charging ourselves. So when you consolidate, when you actually consolidate all that out, that that would actually come out of theirs, but the expense is still there. Are there any other questions for me? All right. I didn't put anybody to sleep, did I? Oh, wait a minute. There's one. Well, I mean, you're also talking about different areas have different shortages. You know, some big shortages that we had, I know dining, Mike had mentioned about some of the hiring, some of the servers that he needs. But in some of the areas like cooks and so forth, he's been successful. So this is not across the board. This is this is in different areas. Home health was a big one for last year. That's now coming coming around where we are able to hire. My hope is that 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 market is freeing up a little bit more, and that won't be as much of a concern. Thank you all very much. And do you want me to get Kay up here? Or Kay, if you want to come up?
Put my glasses on so I can see y'all. Hi, I'm Kay Sahaki. As Eric said, I'm the Executive Director of Advanced Care Hospice, and I'm very excited to meet y'all. I wanted to Oh, am I? Is that better? Okay, sorry. I'm Kay Sahaki. I'm the Executive Director of Advanced Care Hospice. And I just wanted to put a little plug in for hospice. I know it's a bad word for a lot of people. Hospice is not about death. Hospice is about the best quality of life every day. What we do is we focus on symptom management for our patients and support and education for our families as they're taking care of their loved one with a terminal illness. So that being said, as Eric said, we just received our state license back in December. We started caring for our patients at that point. We are working toward our certification and accreditation. There are two separate things. Certification is for Medicare. That allows us to bill. And then the accreditation is just a nice thing that we get, and that will be through ACHC. And those will be done at the same time through one survey. So we are seeing our patients pro bono right now. We're building our census so that we can apply for that survey. So right now, we have seen 10 patients. We have had all of our patients remain on our service. In hospice, you can change your mind, just like healthcare everywhere. None of our patients have decided to go to another hospice. None of our patients have decided to revoke their services. And I think that says a lot about the quality of care that we're providing. We've gotten really great feedback. And I just want to let y'all know that we are having very late referrals. Our patients are coming on very late in their disease process. I was just sharing with Eric when I was going through the statistics, our average length of stay is 18 days for our patients. Traditionally, in past hospices, I have patients six months, nine months, and then occasionally patients, you know, shorter. So we're really getting patients and then losing them very quickly. And so what we're finding is patients are not being identified early enough to refer to us. So what we're doing is we are working with the marketing department. We are working with our liaison to try and get contracts at multiple facilities, reaching out to doctors' offices, and trying to do education so that people will start recognizing those referrals earlier, recognize changes in patients earlier. Maybe somebody is going to the ER more often. Maybe somebody is eating a little bit less, starting to lose weight, having problems with sleeping, or issues with eating, changes in ability to care for themselves. And so we've created kind of a checklist for our doctors that we can drop off so to maybe queue them in a little bit earlier because hospice is not just care in the last two weeks of life. So trying to do some different things to get our referrals earlier so that we can provide that support to our patients. Because the one things our one thing our families keep telling us is, I wish I had had you earlier. I wish I'd had the support earlier. I could have used the aid to come in and help me. I could have used this education. I wish I'd known about these meds to help with the breathing or with the nausea or what have you. So that's what we're doing. We are available 24/7. We sleep, but we always answer our phones. We take a call. I take call with my nurses. I am a registered nurse, and I very much believe that as a manager, I won't ask my nurses to do anything that I don't do. So I go out, I see patients, I go out, I do starts of care. And I feel it's really important to be available to support my staff in that way. Eventually, when we're bigger, I will step back and do less of that, but I will always do that. If all of my nurses are busy and it's a perfect storm, I'll be there for them. And I think that's really important to support my staff in that way. So that's where we are. We're working toward our certification and accreditation, and we expect to be there very soon. I actually have two referrals right now. My nurse is admitting one patient today, and we'll be admitting another tomorrow. So that's where we are. Does anybody have any questions? Well, thank you.
Such an important mission. Thank you, Kay. I appreciate that. And next, I'd like to invite Kerry.
Good afternoon. I do have a couple updates for you. Let me see here. And I guess some of you are kind of familiar with me and COVID being one of the two lately as far as having your updates. I did wanted to share a couple of reminders. We are having our COVID booster update on May 9. That is going to be provided by our local health department. And we hope to be able to post on Katie very soon. Earlier this week, the better, when the registration book will be available to sign up for your preferred time slot. We will be utilizing the in-house registration book in the manor to help with that registration process. If you have any questions about that particular clinic or COVID boosters or anything COVID in general, you can always reach out to the clinic with those questions. Our current protocol in independent living, just as reminders, we're all still wearing masks. Yes. If you're not feeling well, please do stay home, contact the clinic. It's okay to stay home and call. You don't have to come to the clinic if you're really not feeling well. We would much prefer being able to keep you in your apartment or cottage and provide services for you there. The clinic will be able to help with making information available about next steps, depending on any symptoms that you have at the time that you call. It may be advisable for another practitioner to get involved, or we can arrange for basic testing if you fall into the COVID symptomatic categories. For anyone who does end up having a positive test to COVID, I know there were a lot of questions because we unfortunately had several individuals at the same time either contract COVID or have direct exposure. If you are determined to be positive, you will have a minimum of a 10-day quarantine, 10-day period that you are not to be eating in the dining rooms. So congregate dining comes with a lot of additional risks, which require us to take off our mask when eating. During the time that we're exposed, we may have several days that we're required to be quarantined, and then additional days that we just need to have additional masking. That additional masking in place does cover a full 10 days regardless of my quarantine status. So just for all of us to remember that we would not be eating in the dining room during those initial 10 days as a minimum if we're ever diagnosed positive. For those that may be contact traced, we'll have additional guidance for you as well. And any restrictions after exposure are going to be dependent on where you are in your series of vaccine. So have you been vaccinated? Have you been boosted? Have you received a second booster? So we provide information through that process. And I appreciate everyone's patience because we did have several individuals who were contact traced at the same time. And we had a lot of communication that we needed to get out. And it did take us a couple days initially to put into writing all of the changes that the local health department had for direction to get back out to everyone. So thank you for your patience with that. Manor East visitation has not changed. So if you're coming over to Manor East to visit, you're still visiting one individual unless they happen to be related. If you are interested in volunteering, we do have volunteers that are able to come into Manor East. Please remember that as a volunteer, I actually follow all the protocol as an employee. So the amount of testing that I might need to do in order to come over in that capacity will be will be different than if I'm just coming over to visit a friend. I was asked when I came in if I had any good news today, and it was specific to masks. And I said, "No, I'm not going to be the bearer of awesome news today." But I don't exactly have bad news either. We had already mentioned that we needed to go through a couple of rounds of tests before we'd know when we potentially could lift the mask mandate. Last week was a very good week for us, I'm very pleased to say. And so towards the end of this week, we do anticipate being able to make an announcement. That announcement, the decision for that announcement, will be weighed heavily by whether or not the test today and Wednesday come back negative. And real quick, it's not on my slide, but there had been some questions recently in some of the other forums regarding clinic services and a request for some additional clarification on what could be provided. We are working on that. We're also working on some additional provider services to be available in the clinic and hoping to get both of those out to you all in the next week or so. Additionally, in the dental space that we have up on healthcare, it is fully furnished. We're really wonderful opportunity for us to have that equipment available for use on campus. The dentist that originally was scheduled to work on campus here is not able to at this time, so we are working with a couple other dentists to go ahead and fill that need. So that will have additional information forthcoming as well. The good thing is that everything is going in the correct direction. And I will ask if there's any questions regarding any topics that I mentioned or one that you think I may be able to help with today. And if none, I'll give it back to Tom.
Thanks, Carrie. Moving on, we have two more presenters, and so I'll invite Tim, and then Lori will end our session for the day.
Good afternoon, everyone. As promised, in the town council, what we wanted to do was target the rollout of the tornado warnings, or more specifically, the severe weather warnings. When we were starting the installation back some time ago, and when we first identified the need to have the weather alert, there were some protocols in place mainly for Manor East and protocols that followed an initial alert that really didn't exist other than through the radios. That didn't sit real well because I felt we needed to expand on that and get that out to a broader base, including the entire campus. We went on a journey to figure out the best means, and we're still not quite done. I think we've got some electronic versions that we'll be able to grab in the near future to incorporate the expansion of the alert. But what we've been managed to do was to add a weather alert on each one of the fire panels, means it's in each one of the buildings. We do, what we, what we're working on, or what we have in place, is the ability to step down and let you know where those steps are at according to what weather announcement is out there. We constantly and consistently monitor NOAA radios 24/7. They are in care bases, they're at the security checkpoints, and we also have our phones in case we get an alert. So we are monitoring that 24/7. As most of you know, there are two stages to a tornado. One is that there is a watch, which they consider yellow, and then there is a warning, which they consider red. A watch means that there are favorable conditions for a tornado. There's a possibility of wind and storms out there that could cause one. When you have a warning, and when NOAA escalates that, it goes into what they consider a red zone or an immediate take cover, take shelter now implication. It means that they have spotted a weather cloud on Doppler radar that could produce a tornado, or that is a tornado, or someone has spotted a tornado and called it in. So they're looking at it. NOAA knows immediately when there is a tornado cloud. Now, if the warning goes off, it doesn't necessarily mean one's on the ground. It doesn't have to be both. It could be a cloud and a tornado, but it doesn't have to have the tornado. It can be the cloud. So when Doppler radar sees it, when NOAA sees it, it goes to that warning stage. So just remember that about the difference between a warning and a watch. What we are able to do is broadcast to you, and the same features will be broadcast virtually at the same time across campus. Our focus is for Manor East, and our obligations for the manpower that we have on any given time will be focused on Manor East, but we will be able to escalate that for you and then de-escalate that. Now, what I mean is, is that when we go to a severe storm warning, we're not going to lead you up to a warning. We're not going to say there are clouds around that could cause one, or there's a watch in effect. We will only broadcast the warning in your areas when we know that NOAA has issued a warning, which means that there is a cloud around, or is that there's a tornado spotted. So we wanted to make certain whenever you hear this, that you are responsible for taking care of yourselves and seeking shelter. There will not be someone come around, knock on your door, tell you to hide, get an interior room. When you hear this warning, you need to take it seriously, and you need to get yourselves to an interior room. If you're in a common area, come into a space like this. If you are near a stairwell, get into the stairwell. You need to be cognizant of where you're at and where you need to go once you hear this. Like I say, it will only be played when we know that there is an issue and it's pending. The reason that we're doing it this way is because when you hear a warning, you only have a matter of minutes typically if you are in its path. It is not going to give us a broad 10-minute, 15-minute window. If the warning comes on, now we can be near it, we can be close to it, but it is tracking. And if it happens to be tracking toward us, there's only a matter of minutes for you to act. So I want to play these, play each of these for you to let you hear them, and then I'll show you how we'll step this down. "May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? A severe storm warning has been issued. Seek shelter immediately. Interior spaces away from doors and windows is preferable. Shelter in place until the all-clear is given." When you hear that, that's the time to act. There's not going to be a lead-up or another broadcast that tells you that there's a tornado coming. This is what you will hear. This means there's a tornado coming. We've gotten a weather warning that's in the red from NOAA, and we are acting on that weather warning. Now, once the tornado, if it's near us and we are in the red, we are still constantly monitoring those NOAA radios. A NOAA radio will do the same thing like you see the broadcasters do. They will follow and track that tornado as it moves in increments of about, you know, less than five minutes. So they're telling you, "If you live here, take shelter. If you live here, take shelter. If you live here, take shelter." So we will broadcast that. Now, if it is near us and comes close to us, it'll eventually go back to a watch. When the tornado and that cloud moves away, NOAA will go to the yellow portion. They'll go to a watch. And when the watch occurs, that's when we're asking you to remain vigilant, but you're still free to move about. And let me play that one. This same under control will be the ones that you hear after a fire alarm. One of the things I was able to do, I know that when the fire alarms go off, you'll hear an under control, which means we understand what it is. You're free to do what you need to do, but still remain vigilant. And then we will do an all-clear. The all-clear in this process will be the all-clear you hear as well as in, on the fire alarms. So just remember, under clear, under control, all-clear will both, will play for each of those events. "May I have your attention, please? The situation is under control. You are free to move about the building, but remain alert for further announcements." When you hear that, that means that NOAA's gone back to a yellow condition. They've gone back to a watch. It just means that they're favorable and that if there was a tornado warning, it's moved away, and it is moving away. So that's what, how you can think about that. When you hear this, and it goes back to yellow, you can go about your business. On the all-clear, it means that NOAA is finished with their watch, their warning's gone, their watch is now gone, and it goes back to an all-clear status. Now, NOAA doesn't say it's all-clear. They just come off the watch. So when we come off a watch in a tornado event, this is what you'll hear. "May I have your attention, please? The situation is all-clear. You are free to continue with normal operations." So please just remember that. These things are in place. We will be using them as we move forward. What I would like to do toward fall is to have a drill. Everyone would know about the drill. We'd like to do a campus-wide drill if we can, and we'll try to get that set up. But you will hear this under control and all-clear with any of the fire alarms that we have for the future. Okay? Yes, sir? The cottages are still right now on their own. We have some, we have some things in place. We're, I'm doing some upgrades on the panels where we'll be able to grab those and also implement a call-out system with the, with the warnings and the all-clears. So in the future, working on it. It's getting there. Are there any other questions? Yes, ma'am? May, the, all of the pressure washing setup for May. The pressure wash company that we had, they had some struggles over the past couple years, like everyone else with labor. We've had to mitigate what, you know, the labor that they had in order for them to come on campus, but it is, it is scheduled now for the week in front of Memorial Day. So hopefully it holds. But should see that, you know, coming up into May. Any other questions? Y'all enjoy your day.
Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me okay in the back? Just wanted to share a few things today. Let me see. This been? Okay. I'm going to go a little backwards from that slide. Wednesday is National Denim Day, so we are going to celebrate by allowing our employees, residents, staff, guests, whoever would like to participate, to wear denim that day. If you make a donation of, a minimum donation of $3, we'll give you a little sticker, and on Wednesday can wear your denim. So if you see employees and staff around with their denim on, they should have a little sticker celebrating National Denim Day. The proceeds from that event go toward our Employee Relief Fund. You all may have, some of you probably received an email on Friday morning. I understand there was some confusion about it. I apologize for that. It was about the Employee Relief Fund and how you can participate with that. I understand some of the emails went to spam. Part of that is probably, and Tom, please come correct me if I'm misspeaking, but some of that may have been, if it was the first email you received from me, it might not have recognized my email address. Also, some of you, and I don't know why this happened, I'm looking into it. The email address that it came from may have included the word Blumerang. Blumerang is our software that we use for our donor database, and that is the software that sends out the emails. So I am not sure why it came from that address. I'm looking into that to find more out about that. But as far as our fundraising plans, as Eric said, we have started fiscal '23, and so we, I have a new plan for this year. It may be different from what you've seen in the past, but beginning this month, you will be receiving emails each month. Some will be financial appeals, some will be stories on the impact of what your gifts have done for residents and staff and Covenant Woods. They will come from either myself or Tom, the majority of them. Occasionally, you might see one from a board member, but the majority of them will come from Tom or I. If you receive something and you have any questions about it, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. The next one you will receive is on May 6th, I believe is the day it's going out. So you can be on the lookout for that. Any, any questions for me? So far for Denim Day, we have received over $3,400, which is a record. So thank you very much for your support. I don't know yet what has been collected at the concierge desks. That will happen today and tomorrow. Any questions?
So if there are additional questions, we're at the 3 o'clock hour. Certainly feel free, we can take a moment here if we want to in the room, or if you're watching online, or watch it at a later date. If you have questions, contact us through email. Use the form that you customarily use, or you can email me directly, and we'll get back to you with some answers. We will post this presentation to Katie, so that will be a good trigger for what we covered today. And the last thing I will do is leave you with this handsome little guy who, so Earth Day is also a good birthday. There were eight little boys that were born on Friday morning, one of whom is my grandson, Liam. So you'll be seeing Liam around. He has blonde hair, but all of my attitude. He's very quiet, and he's very complacent and just very friendly. He hasn't bitten any of us yet. So little Liam Thomas joined us on Friday morning. He is back home with mom and dad today. So any of you who've experienced grand parenthood, you know that that's a whole different season of life. Some people say you should just skip right to grandkids, skip your own kids. But it's wholly gratifying and such a blessing to see your children now take on the role that you have had. And there's, over the time, there will be some new understanding of what it meant to be a parent. And the worry begins, and if you've gone through this process, for me, I was more worried about my daughter, not my son-in-law, but I was worried about my daughter through the whole process, and now we're all focused on Liam. So I just want to share that with, with you all today, and he'll be around to see you at some point. And thank you again for your attendance and your time and your attention, your thoughts, and thank you for serving the mission with us. So enjoy the rest of your day.